It's gotta be. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 12th, 2025 Portsmouth Town Council Meeting. In the event of an emergency, we will leave the building through three doors. Committee building. And wait for further instructions. First responders, if you would all now please join me, please with allegiance in a moment of silence, or I'm in an unwavering harm's way.
One nation under God, indivisible, where the liberty of each of us is small.
Thank you, everyone.
Your directions are at the bottom of the sheet.
What's that? I'm just waiting for Mr. Gleason to get back so I can say, Madam Clerk, roll call. Thank you.
And the.
Mr. Gleason?
Here.
Ms. Blank?
Here.
Ms. McDowell?
Here.
Ms. Patton?
Here.
Mr. Payron?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
I am here. All right, so the President's Executive Summary, after our last meeting two weeks ago, we had an update from our legal team on all things legal litigation. Our court against the town. There were no votes taken, it was just an update to bring all the councilors. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as of.
So moved.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. Sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, we have a few changes. We have a third Cumberland Farms within two miles of each other. We need a Victorios license for Cumberland Farms doing businesses, Cumberland Farms at 302 East Bree Road, and also a holiday license for the store later. Move to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes seven to zero. We have a new peddler's license, mobile food establishment for McKinnon Enterprises LLC doing business as Sprinkles Ice Cream, 28 Williams Road, Exeter.
Move to approve.
Move, oppose, most. And we have a request for advertisement for permanent expansion of the service area for graphic coffee, they would like to permanently have their patio. For serving, and we can have that. On the next January 28th.
Who advertised for a public hearing on?
All those different. Aye, close, motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, so adjourn us, a board of licensed commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes seven to zero. Of minutes for our 7:28 meeting and the executive that followed. Questions, if you can send them in.
If not, motion approved as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passes seven to zero. Mr. Rayner, Town Administrator's Report.
I agree, Mr. President, Town Council. The Rhode Island Energy Facility Sighting Board, the EFSB, has scheduled two public hearings this month to gather comments from Aquinic Island businesses. And businesses on a potential moratorium on new gas. The first hearing will be held on Wednesday, August 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Innovate Newport Center. And the second hearing will take place on Wednesday, August 27th, at 6:00 PM in the. Additional details, including the official hearing notices, are available on both the town and the EFSB websites. The Rhode Island Public Transit Authority, RITPA, held public hearings on proposed service changes. Apparently planned to address a budget deficit. And those hearings were held July 28th. RITPA Board has since voted to delay any decision on service cuts while the agency explores other options. So bussards will remain unchanged for now, and the public is encouraged to stay informed through RITPA's website for any updates. On Thursday, July 31st, the Fire Department held a ceremony at the Sakanet Street Club to recognize the promotion of four officers. And the swearing in of nine new firefighters and a fire dispatcher. The event honored the achievements and marked the beginning of a continued, continued service to Portsmouth. And we congratulate all of those recognized and thank them for the commitment to safety and well-being of our residents. Respect to the audit, the town's auditors conducted internal controls testing on July 22nd through 24th. As of August 7th, the Finance Department has completed payment of all FY25 invoices, allowing for the audit process to proceed and get the finalizing of our records. Another onsite visit by the auditors is expected early to mid-September. To date, approximately 25% of requested documentation has been updated according to review. Nyhart, the town's new actuarial firm, has begun securing the necessary backup materials from the previous provider, Gov Invest. And has committed to meeting an October deadline for all required audit-related requirements. Finance and Human Resources staff will continue to assist to ensure timely completion of the audit. On Tuesday, August 5th, the Police Department hosted its annual national night out at Glen Park. This nationwide initiative held on the first Tuesday in August brings community members, law enforcement, and law enforcement into seeking partnerships and promote public safety. CNDs enjoyed an evening of games, activities, and food trucks from local vendors. Now, the Portsmouth Police Department has been participating in national night outs since 2014. And the event continues to serve as a valued opportunity for constructive engagement between the Portsmouth Police Department and our community. Still sticking with the Police Department, the 11th Annual Police Department Awards and Promotion Ceremony will be held on Wednesday, September 24th, at 6:00 PM. The yearly event is held at Glen Manor House and recognize the police promotions and accomplishments of the previous year. Electronic invites will be sent to you in the coming weeks. With regard to the summer school building projects, the School Department reports that work on the Portsmouth High School roof replacement is approximately 70% complete. With no issues in. Crews are now working into Area B, the final section of the roof, which is expected to take about 10 days to complete. Cleanup of completed areas will occur next week, and no significant changes or deviations from the project plan. Renovations to the Portsmouth Middle School bathrooms remain on schedule for completion before the start of the school year. Restroom Area A, the fifth and sixth grade wing, epoxy flooring was completed on August 1st. Wall and tile accessory installations are underway, with turnover expected the week of August 18th. Restroom Area B, the seventh and eighth grade wing, epoxy flooring is scheduled for completion on August 15th, followed by wall tile and accessory installation the week of August 18th. Turnover for Area B is projected the week of August 25th. Summer paving starts this week. The work is planned to go through Monday, September 1st, weather permitting. During these dates, streets undergoing paving will be accessible for local traffic only, so drivers can root. Paving will likely place on the following streets, Long Lido, North Street, Pleasant Street, South Street, Edley Street, Brown Terrace, Hero Terrace, and Jesse Drive. More information can be found on our website. With regard to Mount Hope, the Rhode Island Turnpike Bridge Authority, RITPA, will close the Mount Hope Bridge from 7:00 PM this coming Thursday through 5:00 AM next Monday, August 18th. Allow crews to complete roadway seats and entrances. Work will include milling and policing of a new overlay designed to extend the life of the driving service. The bridge will be closed to all vehicle traffic during that time, except for emergency response vehicles. Residents and travelers are encouraged to plan ahead and use alternate routes. A signage has been put in place, multiple notices have been given, press releases, and websites and emails. And then lastly, I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Elizabeth Viveros as the new Superintendent of the Portsmouth School District, succeeding Dr. Thomas Kenworthy. Dr. Viveros has served Portsmouth schools since 2012 in a variety of leadership roles, including Melville Elementary Principal. The multi-tiered system of support coordinator, and most recently as Deputy Chief Intendant. Leadership has contributed to a high state of performance ratings for our schools, expanded career and technical education opportunities, and secured grant funding for industrial programs. We look forward to working with Dr. Viveros and her whole, and to the continued success of the Portsmouth School District under her leadership.
Or Liz?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Rayner?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of things. One, I, I was sad that we, that I wasn't able to attend the Fire Department promotion. I'm sure it was an oversight in the lateness of the invitation, but I commend those people. I'm hoping that some town council members present for that. Secondly. It's not on one of these things, but I just have a question regarding, maybe it's here, or maybe it has to be on another. Meeting agenda, but just have a question regarding the backup. And then Mr. Rayner, it's now going to the state website, correct? Is it possible to have the backup continue to be here as well? It's so much easier, anyway, is to have the backup here, click it, and it's under the thing.
It's sort of, that will work.
Oh, it is?
Yes. So we're still in the process of trying to figure out best solution for that. But in order to get it on to.
Will you continue to work because it, it is so much easier, and I did receive only one call, but I did receive a call.
The problem is, is that we can't access it that way on the Secretary of State's website, so.
I never go to that, I always go to ours.
It's an open meetings question, Jen's giving me the eye, so I think I'll, 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 and it's an open meetings question, and so, sorry.
Any better?
No. You used registered. Excellent.
Is that better? There we go. We, we had an issue because the Secretary of State's website doesn't take the same links that ours does. So when she posts it, so that we have our links on the town website, the Secretary of State's website did not have them. I'm applying with the Open Meetings Act by putting in the backup. All the places it's supposed to be. Really, it needs to be in both places. But it's a bit of a technological adjustment or, or perpetuation of effort to get it to where we can post this at the Secretary of State. You'll notice that your agendas are getting longer since I've been here. Solicitor, I'm sure the clerk is not thrilled, and the administration, I'm killing, you know, more trees, but I think we're just trying to make sure that you fully comply with the act.
So our goal is to hopefully get them, you know, get them back to ours, and then make sure they're on the, they're on the state website, I saw that. But it's our goal to continue to work on getting them.
Well, because they are, they are on the website, just need to. They're just not in the order you'd like them to be. That's what we're trying to get them into, trying to figure out how to get them in order, because the system, first time we did it, put them all in alphabetically.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. We have resignations and deployments, we have a resignation of Mr. Donovan from the zoning board of review.
Move to receive his resignation with regret.
All those in. Close, motion passes. We have an appointment for Ms. Sue Cooper to the juvenile hearing board.
Ms. Sue Cooper to the juvenile hearing board as in.
All those in favor?
Aye. Question? Yes.
I just have a question about process. Where is it posted for residents to know what is avail, what is open? What committees have availability?
On the, usually on the boards and committees, we also have them listed on the boards here. We have them listed in the clerk's office. We do run ads all the time, because it does, it is, gets cost prohibitive. Try to do it, especially like zoning, we're doing an ad, just them all, but because it's zoning's a big. Big one. Wider.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if they could put it on our website, so that we can list, so that everybody sees what's available if they don't come into the town hall?
I mean, we can list it, it would still be on, under boards and committees.
Right, it's just that way people know what's available.
That's the biggest.
Or would it into the paper, filed together, possibly?
We usually do.
I just haven't seen this available, so I wasn't sure.
Because we, that one just came up, so that's what, we first, I wanted for us to advertise for that position. It had to have been included, so, but for that one, we, we had, as soon as it was posted.
Did it get out of the file, or was it application already in the file, or not?
No, it was not.
Okay.
I have a question, do you maintain a list of past applicants up to a certain point? Because when do you get rid of them?
Just so people know. We usually keep them up until that point when somebody's posted, and then we start again if anybody's.
Once the, once the positions filled, that's it.
Right.
Maybe that's a note that should be in there, that you must, because I know people have said, oh, I'm, I'm on the list, and I, and I said, I don't think so.
Every Tuesday that's supposed to be done, there'll be.
You must resubmit when this is open.
So in regards to this, I'll just piggyback on, on something that, on the website. Excuse me, Jen, is it possible to have like a banner? Open vacancies of committees, because I'm just thinking this. So zoning is open, let's say. Maybe Parks and Recreation is open, but they open at different times, so how long do we extend it? Excuse me, you know what I'm saying? If we had a banner, please, and say, accepting applications until a week, three weeks, I don't know what our policy is.
We do it until.
But if, yeah.
Because a lot of times people don't come right away, and we're looking guns for somebody to fill a position. So, I mean, there are committees where we've been advertising nonstop for people to join the committees, and they're not getting anybody.
Okay. I was just thinking like a banner in, in, in our website, saying the vacancies and when the application. Available until such and such a day and see where it goes, but, okay.
It goes somewhere, but a banner of the limited space that.
All righty, on to new business number one, quest to bring a disc golf course. Portsmouth, with supportive Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Dubay.
The members of Town Council. My name's Roderick Dubay, reside at Seven Grain Terrace in Portsmouth here. A little bit about myself, I've been a resident here for over 20 years now. I have two children, they both.
If they ever just pick up the microphone a little bit, I'm sorry, it's just.
Is that better?
It's on, it's on. Indirection, and if you don't talk right into it, it doesn't object to it.
Okay. I've been a resident in Portsmouth now for over 20 years, I have two children that have gone through Portsmouth. One is currently in Portsmouth High School, the other one just graduated this year. I also own Precision Power Incorporated, we're an electric company out of Portsmouth. I'm sorry. Okay, can you hear me now? All right, sorry about that. All right, so I've been a resident here for over 20 years. I own Precision Power Incorporated, it's an electric company based out of Portsmouth here. Two children, both with Portsmouth High School, one's currently enrolled, is going to be a junior this year, the other one just graduated. At this point, I just want to take a quick second and allow Dan, he's been my partner in this for over a year, he's going to help me with this presentation, so allow him to introduce himself real quick.
Hi, I'm Dan Marr, I reside at 94 Flynn Corn Road, I've been in Portsmouth for coming up on eight years. I have two kids aged almost four and two. At Melville right now, the four-year-old for pre-K, which is fantastic. And yeah, I'm just excited about this presentation here.
Quick overview, what we're going to discuss today is, what is disc golf? What does a disc golf course bring to Portsmouth? What are the benefits of having a disc golf course? And what are the impact of a disc course to the town? And what is the cost to the town? Okay. First, we're going to start with, what is disc golf? Dan's going to take a second here to bring up our basket. All right, so about disc golf, it's not ball golf, all right? It's played with a basket and a disc, or a frisbee, if you will. Usually made of rubber, plastic material, pretty soft. We don't build a disc golf course like a traditional golf course, really, you know. We don't install water hazards, we don't install sand traps, we don't build tees and greens. You know, we use the natural elements of the landscape to provide the character of the disc golf course. There are over 10,000 disc golf courses in the US as of right now, and growing every day. There's over 4 million habitual disc golfers in the United States alone, and over 8 to 12 million people who have played disc golf at least once in their life. It's played by all ages, from as soon as a kid is old enough to throw a baseball, he can throw a frisbee. You know, AARP just did a great article on how a lot of seniors are getting into disc golf, you know, to get in their steps, to get in their, their, their exercise, if you will. So what we're going to do is we're going to move on to what does a disc golf course bring? So it creates a healthy community for, an activity for all ages of people, like it just. We have, you know, it brings great, like, school disc golf clubs. Senior activities, it will expand our Parks and Rec offerings, you know, what we have as a town to offer to people. You know, people come from all over towns, you know, we travel hour, hour and a half, two hours sometimes to go play disc golf. You know, the closest disc golf course to Portsmouth is located, you know, 45, 50 minutes away, is one in Dartmouth, you know. Few others scattered throughout Rhode Island, Rhode Island actually has nine disc golf courses at the moment. Unfortunately, none are close to here. We'll distinguish Portsmouth as a unique and desirable sporting location for disc golf. Brings local business growth, you know, a lot of people go out, they play around at disc golf, they want to go out for pizza after, you know, have a meal, you know, they get hungry after throwing a game of disc golf. And, you know, it helps support local businesses, brings more people to town. These are summer camp activities, if we get a summer camp, camp that runs out to the Glen, it's a great activity to bring the kids out, hey, you know, let's go play some disc golf with the kids. It's, you know, it's an easy activity and, you know, just promotes outside, you know, promotes being outside rather than maybe sitting on a video game or something. You're in your house, you're outside playing disc golf, you're doing something. Local school clubs, you know, high school could have a disc golf team, they could have a disc golf club, middle school, even elementary school, you know, could benefit from this. Okay, now how does disc golf accomplish that? With minimal physical exertion, you know, it's, it's similar to taking a walk through the woods, or, or, you know, hiking around the Glen. It's pretty much the same thing, except you're throwing a disc into a basket. Healthy activity, you know, an average round, you walk about 3.6 miles, you know, that's 80% of what the CDC recommends for a week of healthy activity. And you can get it in a few hours on a disc golf match. You know, very minimal entry cost, you know, it's free to play at most disc golf courses. A disc costs you around $10, and that's really all you need to get into the hobby. You can get in from a friendly game with family, or you can get into a competitive league. You know, it, it brings people to the area. We'll talk about impact to the Glen. Now, these baskets, they're not permanent. We build a disc golf course with nothing more than a shovel and a wheelbarrow. We dig a hole, we place that basket into the ground, we put what they call a collar around it. And there's a locking key that goes in the bass, in the bottom of the basket, so the basket is removable within a minute. So there's nothing permanent with it, if a basket has to move, it's just as easy as digging up the collar, digging another hole, putting the collar back in, moving the basket. This goes with the tees too. The tees are nothing more than just a post in the ground with a number on it, hole one, hole two, four. There's no physical or lasting impact, you know, these, like I just explained, they come in just as easy as they go out. As far as. There will not be one tree having to be cut down to put this course in. Everything at the Glen is set up to be a disc golf course, for years now, we've brought this basket and others down to the Glen and thrown around there. Like I said, it's, we use the natural landscape of places like the Glen, multi-use parks, to provide the, the character of the disc golf course. Now, disc golf courses are, look, over 90% of disc golf courses in the United States are located in multi-use parks. That have such things as hiking, track and field, baseball, softball, soccer, and it melds great with them. You know, a couple of examples are Curtis Corn and Middle School. The disc golf course actually plays right through all the hiking trails. It goes right through the track and field course, goes right alongside the soccer and lacrosse fields. Where cross-country and mountain biking is also done too, yeah. This, near zero visual impact. All you see is this basket, and if you look at the picture right here, I don't know if you could see it up on the slide. There's the basket, so from that first slide, you couldn't even see that basket, and that was about 160 feet away. So they, they hide with the landscape, it's not something that visually impacts the Glen at all. As far as cleanliness of the Glen, disc golfers naturally, they're outdoors people, they, they, they pick up after themselves. There's been multiple reports of like park rangers and, and, you know, supervisors of parks, that's, you know, like, wow, the park is much cleaner now that we've brought the disc golf course. As far as foot traffic, you know. It's going to be more foot traffic brought to the Glen, but that's a good thing. You know, of the probably eight to 10 trips we took down there, we were lucky if we seen one or two people using that park. And it's exactly what it is, it's foot traffic, you know, there's horses that walk through there, there's hikers, there's mountain bikers. This does no more damage than that, you know, if you think about a horse, it's probably a few thousand pounds, you know, and you have people that are walking through the Glen with sneakers on. You know, so as far as damage, there is no damage, it's just foot traffic. Baskets are not permanent, it will, it will not, it's not going to clutter the Glen in any way. These baskets are set apart, you know, between 200, 300, 400, 500 feet apart. There will be 18 of them located there, and throughout the whole Glen, if you actually, we have a layout of the course, we got Dan pulled it up here. And what we've done, if, is we've concentrated on making sure we stay away from all the other activities that are going on at the Glen. This plays along the exteriors of all the fields here, you know, not intruding on any other parts of, of the, of the, oh, I'm sorry, can we, okay, you got it up there now. Yep, so. It's designed to stay away from all areas of Glen that are used, especially the manor house, where this is here, it does not come anywhere close to the manor. There's no danger of a frisbee flying into the manor house, there's actually a big tree line there, and there's a chain link fence that goes over there, so there's no danger of being that close to the Glen. So, we. The way we're looking at this is, the first year of the disc golf course would almost be a chance to grow with the Glen. You know, these things, being able to be maneuvered, maneuvered, moved throughout the Glen, we allow it to grow. We play for a year there, and maybe someone says, hey, you know, let's move this basket over the way, it's, you know, impeding something. Then we move it, it, it's simple as dig it up, move the basket, not a big deal. It it's simple as dig it up, move the basket, not a big deal. Sorry, I have to go buy my thing here. Yeah, the leverage of unutilized portions of the Glen Park. It kind of goes along with what I was just saying on how we're off to the sides. We're not impeding on anybody walking their dog, hiking, mountain biking, playing volleyball there and playing at the park that's there. Some other disc golf parks that are located in mixed use uh Parks of Slater Park in Providence, it's located at a mixed use park with hiking, volleyball, basketball and some soccer courts there too. Nenagrit actually holes four and five play right in between one of the trolls they just put in there. So it's, you know, it it does work very well with mixed use parks. Curtis Corner Middle School talked about that, uh Borderland, Borderland up in Massachusetts. They actually have a manor house right on the course, which the disc golf course plays around. They hold weddings there, functions, and none of them are interrupted by disc golf. World War Two Park, another one that's up in Attleboro, Mass, located right in the middle of of the park where there's actually a zoo. Willow Valley is located on a horse farm. So in the journey of that, it's these courses are comfortable at mixed use parks. This is where they, you know, live throughout the United States. We'll move on to what is the cost to the town? So the cost of the town of this is gonna be nothing. To build a disc golf course, we probably need to get about ten thousand dollars together, which would be no problem through donations from local businesses, local disc golfers, local people of the town that are interested. You know, um sponsorships, donation, uh it'll generate revenue just from the play of it where say if you have a league going, people will make donations to Parks and Rec to keep the park going, uh to keep, you know, upkeep. So it will really cost the town nothing to have this course built and to upkeep the course. You finishing, I'm gonna let Dan, I'm gonna let you take over here and so I'm out of my list of stuff here. Thank you, Dan.
There's not really much more to say, that was comprehensive, um and I don't want to take too much time. So really, I guess, any questions that you have that you want us to answer before we step aside and let the proceedings go and proceed?
I have a couple of questions, just mostly about the routing. I would prefer to see it up and away from the manor house. I know they can be copacetic with each other. But if holes one, two, if you could reroute it and holes one, two, three could be maybe the first tee up by the volleyball courts and come down to the tree line that way and around the sheep pen and whatever they call the cow bands.
Yeah, not a problem at all, again, it's like um we're gonna let it grow with the Glen, you know, stuff like that. Like we could take that to effect and maneuver that right away. And as it grows, it plays, you know, we can move this course very easily. So we are expecting that, you know, as as we play, as it goes throughout the, you know, um life of the course, that it will need things moving. It's it's a very common thing amongst disc golf courses that they
I'm less worried about where the baskets are located. I'm more concerned about Friday, Saturday, Sunday parking for folks who want to do tip that, geez, that's a whole nother story. Folks who want to do disc golf and events at the the manor house where if this if hole one and where you have hole eighteen kind of come close together.
Sure.
People can park at the top of the hill rather than down at the bottom of the hills and it keeps parking available for the manor house and
Sure, um this this isn't like a baseball game though, like you really, you know, there's a lot of times um during the middle of the day, you'll have nobody playing the course, most people at work, you know, uh after work, that's that's what most of us play. And you know, you might have one or two groups on the course at once, you know, it's, we're not bringing a crowd here. It's very minimal as far as like, um, you know, when you have a league, I play in a league, there's probably twenty people in our league. We play once a week, you know, um and it's
The answer that we'll give you is absolutely, we will work with you to move it where you're concerned. Any other questions?
Ms. Patton? It's weird that the lights aren't turning on.
Oh, there you go.
Hello. So my concern, my initial concern was the same one as as the president about it being close to the house. And uh and I was just trying to, I I I've played disc golf once in my life. I was hoping I was gonna be happy guilt more of it and I epically was not. And but I wanted to know, are any parameters about the color of the actual structure? Because I'm thinking, wouldn't it be i- i- to make it feel like it fits into the green landscape? Would it make sense to have a like forest green color, like a a green variance so that it sits in?
Sure, so we could do green, we were thinking red because Portsmouth, you know, we were gonna put the Portsmouth logo on them. But you know, you could make them green. They have all the colors of the basket, so if that's an issue, yeah, it's no problem, we can put forest green in.
And then, yeah, the only other concern I was was moving it and rerouting it around the volleyball court. But I think that all in all, the project does make sense because it utilizes the entire park. As a kid who has parents, who has a parent who has kids, I need more coffee. And that plays sports where you guys had your little ledger was exactly where the entire park gets used. And if anyone's ever been down there, it's utilized from eight AM till one or two PM on a Saturday or Saturday or Sunday. And then it's the it's the deadest place in town. And so being able to have an opportunity to be able to utilize the entire space, I think is a worthwhile investment and I thank you guys for bringing this.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Actually, we um in the design of the course, we actually made it a focus to stay away from the places that are utilized and we use the unutilized parts of the Glen to put the holes in.
No, but that is noticed, it's just uh I would prefer to separate the manor house operations and disc golf, that's not like just a big deal.
Any other questions from councillors, Ms. Patton?
Yeah, um can you just explain the tee boxes, the size, they're at every single hole, if that's what it's called?
So for the tee boxes, it'll be um a four by four pressure treated posts just put in the ground. Usually sticks about a foot above the ground and it'll just have a small, you know, about ten inch by twelve inch little plaque on it that has a number on it. And uh maybe a sponsor of a local business, you know, um some of the courses we play at, they have like at a hole twelve has like a pizza, local pizza place there that says, hey, call us, order your pizza now. By the time you get on hole eighteen, it'll be delivered to the parking lot. So that that's all we want to do with the the tees is just a post in the ground and all it does is signify where you throw the disc from.
And what is, I don't know what it's called, but the platform that you throw from?
So um, yeah, there there's a thing called pavers is where they install pavers in for a tee, but we don't plan on doing that. We plan on just putting a post and letting the disc golfers play off the grass.
So like other parks I saw, like a concrete
Yeah, yep, a lot of, a lot of courses do have those, you know, but it's not a necessity. No, nope, nope, just a post in the ground that signifies where you throw from. Um it actually, so as these tees, you know, the course grows and the tees get, you know, uh foot traffic, we can just pick up the post, move it over ten feet, play the tee from there for a year or so and move it back, you know, just to keep the foot traffic, you know, in different places, kind of just let the grass grow, gets worn along a little bit, we move it over, you know, as it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Separate requests, can we go a little higher than a foot so it's not tripping hazard?
Of course, yes, yeah, we could put them at waist height too, you know what I mean? So you could see it right there, that makes total sense. Definitely.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. So is this a private enterprise doing this or can you, can you explain to me that?
No, this will be the property of the town and property of Parks and Rec. I'm just a local resident that loves disc golf, that wants to better my community and have stuff for young, I like I said, I have two young children. There's nothing for them to do. It really, like they play video games for hours, it kills me. I want them outside, I want them doing stuff like this, playing soccer, playing lacrosse, get them outside, you know, burn some energy off, so you're not all wound up at night.
So there's no private enterprise involved in this, okay?
Not at all, it would be property of the town or Parks and Rec.
You know, you said that it's a, it's a ten thousand dollar investment, but it's going to come through have you, you know, grants or whatever or um donations, but have you got a plan, I mean, is that in the making?
Yeah, yeah, I have multiple, I actually already have pretty much all the the money set aside, I have people
You have the ten thousand dollars guaranteed
And more, and more, I have local businesses that are all about this.
Okay.
They love the idea. Yep, no, no, yeah, it's, we're, we're gonna start a nonprofit to to get this started, we'll start a nonprofit business, because I guess that's the way we have to do this with the sponsorships and the town will be the beneficiary of that nonprofit. I have a lawyer that's gonna have that all written up for me.
Oh, so it'll go, it'll go through a nonprofit?
Yes.
The towns.
It will be become, the nonprofit will be the sponsor to build it. Like I said, the town will be the beneficiary. I have a lawyer that's gonna work on that. I kind of liked the way the, like the, I believe it's a Four Hearts, is it, I believe that brought, yeah.
You'd be more like a dog park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Park and then building it and then
Okay, thank you.
Maintenance on it, yeah.
I have, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
So how many in Rhode Island, how many disc golf?
Still, there there are nine.
In Rhode Island?
In Rhode Island, over ten thousand in the United States.
Yeah, I got that. And have you um pursued any other locations in Portsmouth?
Yes, we have, um, we have looked at, it was um suggested by a council member at one of the meetings at Park and Rec that we look at the bottom of seventy. Unfortunately, it's all marsh there, nothing could be built there, you can't walk through it, it's it's all swamp land, it's a reason why it's it's undeveloped, you know, a- as, and we also looked at Melville. The only issue there is that we can't dig into the ground. It's kind of, um, I guess is buried hazards there. So digging one of these into the ground there would, you know, I don't know, maybe it's Navy ground, I'm not sure of that. But I noticed when we went to go look at the property, it said no digging allowed. So unfortunately, that, you know, isn't an option either.
So those two, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what Portsmouth owns, public land, correct?
Uh, sorry, uh, I have a background in uh JS, so I went to the Portsmouth plots. I went through to try to find anything, find out who the owners were, uh how large they are, any kind of access that we could find from that information. And rationally, with public land, the three spots were the Glen Park, the Glen and Melville. And as we said, the Glen seventy doesn't work, Melville can't dig, so it really comes down to the Glen Park.
And do you foresee, I mean, you said it would be um basically an individual sport, but you s- I thought I read in some of the information that I I acquired that there could be tournaments going on.
There could be if, you know, somebody wanted to do a tournament, they could do a tournament there. They would obviously have to go through Parks and Rec and get permission to do so. And I would, it's kind of out of my pay grade, but I would assume maybe a permit through the town or something. You would have, it would, you know, if you did a tournament there, I would have think that you you would need to get permission from the town to do that. Now, as far as leagues go, like I play in a golf league, a disc golf, that's kind of what I was thinking what would be there. You know, maybe one night a week, you'd have members of the town get together and, you know, play a disc golf round. Everyone donating a couple bucks towards the course per team to play, you know, we use half of it for payouts for the the league and the other half will go back to Parks and Rec for upkeep of the Glen, not just the disc golf course, but upkeep of the Glen. So the Glen itself as a park would benefit from the disc golf course.
Okay, and the the money from those tournaments if would definitely come not to the nonprofit and then through the nonprofit to the town, it would come to the town?
Directly to Parks and Rec.
And so the Parks and Rec would be the um custodian of of that tournament, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At some point, I think Mr. Reese can ask his questions, but I I would love to hear from the director of the Parks and Rec about her feelings on on this and
That would help, yes, see, mine works, okay. Uh, just a, just some questions that I had, uh, do any of Parks and Rec's committee members have any financial or business interest in this disc golf now or going forward?
No, not that I, no, no, not that I know.
And how is this regulated and controlled during public use? I say multiple uses of varying skills wanting to play at the same time. Is somebody monitoring this somehow or is they?
There's, so it's monitored by, it's, we're, we're disc golfers are friendly people, you know, if someone's playing on hole one, you allow them to tee off, they go first, you can go behind them. Or you could walk to hole nine, start on hole nine and then play like the back nine first and then play the front nine. Like I said, it's not a baseball team, there's not that many people there at once. During a league, when we have, like I said, about twenty people, what we'll do is like, kind of similar to golf, we'll do a shotgun start where four people start at hole one, four people will start at hole three, four people will start at hole five. You know, and that kind of separates everybody throughout the course.
There in the tournament, there'd be no public access?
Uh, no, there would be public, this doesn't
In the middle of the tournament?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, so the it's, the way it's designed is to stay away from, is to stay away from the utilized, like all the stuff that's the the playground that's there. You can play in the playground while a disc golf tournament's going, you could have a volleyball game while the disc golf uh tournament's going. It's it stays along the, like, when a tournament's going, you have four people to a hole, on all the holes. And it's in the rules of disc golf that, you know, your throw is this disc golf etiquette. If somebody's walking across the, you know, the course with their dog, you're not gonna throw your disc. You know, you're gonna wait, allow them to pass, you know, if there's another disc golfer, maybe you throw it bad and there's another disc golfer off the side. It's just like golf, you yell four or like, hey, watch out, you know? So you're responsible for your disc, you're not gonna want to hurt anybody with your disc and
That was another question, I would just said weighted discs are thrown, how are walkers, children and dogs separated safely from this? So and you're saying that disc golfers would never do that?
Never do that, no, it's throughout the, you know, country, actually, you know, it just in, like I said, in Rhode Island, the few examples I used in Rhode Island alone. Curtis Corner, the disc golf course plays right through the hiking trails, it plays right through the mountain bike trails. It plays right along the bike path that is there. It goes right behind the track and field, we were there earlier today, the guys were throwing the the shot put. You know, right as we playing disc golf right by them and there was no interference whatsoever.
The other question I had, I'm I'm the liaison for the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And they asked me to read their position on this so that this gets out into the public. Okay, so, so it's the Honorable Members of the Town Council, it has come to the attention of the Portsmouth Conservation Commission that a proposal for disc golf at the Glen is under consideration. The Conservation Commission serves to protect and develop natural resources and preserve natural aesthetic areas within the town as stated under section one through four in our charter. As stewards of open space in Portsmouth, the commission reviewed and discussed disc golf proposal at the meeting on May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. At that meeting, a vote was taken and the Conservation Commission decided not to support the current proposal for disc golf at the Glen. Additionally, the commission recommended that the Town Council preserve these open and aesthetic areas of the Glen by denying the requested disc golf proposal for the following reason. The installation of disc golf baskets would clutter the landscape. The proposal takes up a large area and others using the Glen would be affected. Even though the proposal claims it will not interfere with other park users, it will interfere with certain activities, especially hiking. The proposal benefits a special interest group and interferes with general public use. The proposed disc golf area is too close to the uh Glen Manor House. And disc golf facilities in other areas may experience grass and soil damage. Thank you for the consideration in this man- in this manner.
My only question is that, why was I not invited to that meeting? Because I could explain a lot of the stuff they have there. You know, I think it's simply, I've touched upon it in my presentation here as far as the foot traffic goes, as far as being, you know, distance from the manor house, I've touched upon all that. And as uh Mr. Hamilton here asks, like, could we move a hole? Yeah, no problem, you know, if that's what it takes, move a hole away from the the manor house.
Say now is the time to get in touch with the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I was, so um I I have been working this over a year with Parks and Rec. I wasn't, you know, made aware that there was this um meeting for the disc golf course, because I would have loved to been there. You know, maybe help with a little bit of explanation on, you know, what we have there.
I guess that's it, alright, thank you.
Welcome.
Hey, are you questions from the council? You guys want to just step aside for a second, we'll take some questions from the audience from Mr. Fierl. You can leave it right there, that's fine. We're all gonna try and toss it in when you leave.
Hello, David Fierlo, forty-five Hamilton Drive. I'm the Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee. I just want to give you guys a little update on on this uh disc golf. So we first met uh Roderick and Dan in December, it was the first time they came to our meeting and they
uh Rodrick and Dan in December. It was the first time they came to our meeting and they presented uh the idea of building a disc golf course in Portsmouth. That was in December. We also met. In February, March, April, and in May, we finally took our vote. So this was a process that didn't come in on a whim. We sat every uh every time they came to us, questions arose, placement of pins, where would they go? What would this be like? Well, what if people are there? And I will say Rodrick and Dan were more than accommodating to everyone's request throughout every meeting we've had. Uh, the initial meetings, the proposed layout that they had wasn't a different part. It was more near the forest, uh horse rink and around that field. And there were some questions and comments from uh a few residents that did come, but also some of our committee members about horses that walk through the field that could, they could be spooked by pins, um, you know, just general questions. And at the next, and that was in February when we had our new uh committee members. Dan, Dan and Rodrick came back in March and were like, here's a new layout. We walked the grounds, we looked, we decided to change, we heard your concerns, and we moved the pins. Uh, so each time that they we met with them, they were more than accommodating to move this um the the locations and whatnot. Uh, Mr. Gleason did attend one of our meeting. It was in March and he did ask about uh if there were other locations in Portsmouth, uh particularly Melville, uh Seventy Field. And Dan and Rodrick, uh as they alluded, there was no digging on Melville, but also uh this is a low impact to the environment and why Glen Park works very well is uh DPW already does mowing of those fields and where these pins and tees would be stay within the mowed path during the summer. Whereas Melville, there would really need to be, if we could dig or if they could dig, there would need to be more disruption to the trees, the shrubs, the natural wildlife. With the location at uh at uh um the Glen, they're not disrupting a thing. They're not taking a tree down. Uh, DPW doesn't have to move anything, doesn't have to remove anything. They would just mow along where they normally do because that's where the pins be located. So DPW doesn't have to do anything more than they're already doing in the summer when they're mowing. So that's why the Glen made an ideal location for uh disc golf and that's why we were on board with that. Once we decided to, once we came up or they came up with that location, then it was working with the pin locations. Um, part of what was attractive to us was the fact that this is a it's a low impact to the environment. It's a very affordable thing for uh any anybody. It discs, like they said, are about ten dollars each. Uh, young, from young to old to seniors, it's a great senior activity. I know pickleball's the hot item. Um, but disc golf is also very low impact for seniors and it would be uh one of the ideas that we did talk about at one of our meetings was, wouldn't it be great while they're building the senior center to put one of the one of these pins on there so they can start practicing and then have, you know, maybe a Parks and Rec program where we shuttle seniors over and they can play on the Glen. Just ideas that we were throwing out, thought it was a good idea. Um, so these are in national parks, as they said, horse farms, schools, Rhode Island has a few of these in schools. These are the ideal locations for disc golf is places like the Glen. Um, the reason why, again, we liked that location was low impact to the land, uh DPW, great for all ages. And um, as I said, it brings revenue to the town, which we thought was also a benefit and why we think that this should be in the town. I know our local businesses such as Fieldstones and Rocco's and West Main Pizza and Anna D's would probably like to see a little bit more business, maybe on a Monday or Tuesday night by having some people playing. Um, there were concerns from residents and I've heard it. I've seen it on social media. We had some people come to our meetings and we I think we addressed a lot of these concerns and I look at this as this uh the Glen Park is kind of a multi-use land to me. And there's a softball field, there's volleyball, there's a playground. Um, I don't get, I don't think disc golf would take precedence or any outdoor activity should take precedence over anything else at the Glen. So on your in the statement that you read, which I also saw online, was that this could disrupt hiking. Well, why why does hiking get precedence over somebody playing disc golf, somebody walking their dog? I don't see a precedence over anything. So uh it's a shared space that everybody can uh uh enjoy enjoy. And as Dan and uh Rodrick said, there's etiquette. It's like golf. If you're on your tee box and you're gonna hit your ball and somebody's going across the cart, your path with the cart, you don't hit the ball. Disc golf's the same. Um, there's benefits. Uh, I I also that he mentioned something about a special interest group. That terminology is wrong, first of all, but this isn't a special interest group. I can get a frisbee and go out and play with my son. That's not a special interest group. Anybody can go out with their kid and and play disc golf. Um, so we just, we looked at this on our May meeting. We did vote unanimously six to zero to support this uh fully knowing that we're this could change some of the pin locations, but we do think that this would be a great benefit to the town of Portsmouth.
Any questions from this bureau? Aaron, if you could do me a favor, I'll get to you in a second, sir. We're gonna pull up Mr. Penning online. I'll let him ask a question or make a statement. Mr. Penning, if you're there, you can unmute yourself.
Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Going once.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? I should be unmuted.
All right, we'll we'll come back. Eric, can you try and figure that out? The microphone is moving, but I don't hear it.
I'm unmuted. If if anyone can hear me now.
We'll move on to the gentleman behind you, David. Thank you, sir.
President, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Commandant Sergeant Major Retired Matt Walker. Um, I am a avid disc golfer, PDGA number one zero five six seven eight. Uh, I left the island. Uh, my wife and I were born and raised here. Uh, we left about forty years ago. We joined the Army. Um, we came back last year. Uh, it's been an enjoyable experience, but you know, one of my passions is not very local to where I am. So I really, I'm a sponsored member of the Dynamic Disc Brigade Team, which is an all-veteran team. Um, I'm a hundred percent disabled American vet and this is an activity that is fully within the parameters of what I am able to do now in my life. Um, it's enjoyable. You're playing against yourself and the course, not against anyone else. These young men back here would probably make this course look like a joke, um, based on the uh the way I look at it and the distances and the and, you know, their disc golf bias design goes through the woods. Um, at least as far as I've played mostly over in Willow Valley, a lot of it at Curtis Corner. Uh, this may enter in some woods and come out of some woods and stuff like that, but a lot of this is gonna be uh open area. Um, disc golf, I've brought a couple of handouts, you know, with the disc golf code, uh the golfer's code for uh taking care of the environment, taking care of the people around you and taking care of your community. That's what we're charged with with the brigade team is the growth of the sport. Um, so I reach out to veterans. I try to get them to participate to the extent possible and um and we 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 grow the sport through those efforts. So I rise in support of this. I live on Anthony Road over in Common Fence Point. Um, we've, like I said, been here at home about a year. Um, and and it would be unbelievably perfect if something like this could actually come to fruition. Um, with the Dynamic Discs support, we will get with the team here and try to bring some monies or uh equipment to um building this thing. I've built four courses myself. I built the one on Fort Benning, Georgia down um down at Fort Benning and um and it's it's not invasive. It's not uh something that is going to be noticeable to somebody that doesn't know it's there. Um, I'm here to tell you, I've seen it across the country. I've played at tournaments from California to Indiana, Georgia, and here, played in the state tournament uh championship last year at Curtis Corner. Just had shoulder surgery, so I can't throw a disc at all right now, but um I'm doing the best I can and physical therapy will get me back as soon as I can. So if you have any questions, um I'm here to help. I'm here to support and um I tell you, if if they have a club that is responsible for the course, you will you will reap the benefits of those guys and gals being out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Sir. I just need your help, um, the help. Thank you.
How do we make out with Mr. Penning? You wanna try Miss Davidson and we'll see if it's Mr. Penning and or us. Mrs. Davidson, unmute yourself and. Rosemary, if you can unmute yourself on your end, please. All right, we'll try again in a second. Please, sir. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrick Alton. Gotta figure out how to talk to the, thank you. Uh, Patrick Algier?
And your name and address, thank you.
Okay, I live at twenty two ninety-eight Glen Road.
Thank you.
Across from the park, which is one of the one of the great treasures of Portsmouth, of course. I love to see the volleyball tournaments that come in, they set up every, I think it's Wednesdays. They have sporting events. There's a lot of traffic. I see the foot traffic, horses, a lot of people walking, dogs. There's a few out into the out into the road. And the other is the the historic stone walls. So people will be climbing over the the stone walls to go get their discs. Uh, I know the town has on budget to repair even parts of the stone wall, which aren't really in in that bad of a shape, but it's still like seven, eight thousand dollars for repair. Plus, it's hard to 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 totally restore it to where it looks from the natural aging. So just want to take in consideration of having the paths go across or rate alongside roads. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aaron, how are we making out? Mrs. Davidson, if you can unmute from your end. Mammals, we'll keep going. Come on up. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Susan Bates. I live at one eleven Frank Coelho Drive. Uh, I've lived there for forty-eight years. Um, I have similar concerns to the gentleman before me. Um, so specifically in the field, that's the corner of Frank Coelho and Glen Road. Um, I think it's it's likely that for some players, discs will inadvertently leave the field, will cause people to climb over the the walls. They look like they're sturdy, but there are places where people climb over the walls and they they start falling apart. Um, so that's one concern. The other is we're right near the Glen Manor House and already uh mornings after events at the Glen Manor House, we have to pick up empty beverage containers. Many of them are alcoholic beverage containers. So litter is is always an issue. And with increased traffic, that could be more of a concern. I have no doubt that the people here who are are um disc golfers are not the people who are gonna be a problem, but as you get more and more people, this could become an issue. Uh, I I do wanna say one thing about the the first speaker commented about the Glen not being used very much. Uh, that's not what I see. Uh, there's the new volleyball uh courts, there are the playgrounds, there are dog walkers going through there all the time, all all days of the week and all times of the day. My other concern is I know I have rented uh Glen Park for it was one time for a few hours and I had to show proof of liability uh insurance to the town. I don't know if that's still true, but if if someone gets hurt by a disc, someone walking on Glen Road isn't paying attention and nobody's paying attention and they get hurt. Um, who's responsible for that? Is that the town or? Yeah, I I don't know how that works. I'm not a lawyer. Um, so anyway, those are my concerns. Um, that's all I wanted to voice those. Thank you very, very much.
Understood. So all seventeen and eighteen would be the concern of throwing it onto the road. So we can look at rerouting and, yep, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Mr. Penning, who you couldn't hear on the Zoom, so I came all the way here. Yeah. Well, I was I was putting my twins babies to bed as well.
Well, this is better. They can't hear you then.
Yeah, actually, so that's a perfect excuse to rush out. So good evening. I I I wrote up something, so I'll all my address. So Thomas Penning and I live at two ninety-seven Glen Road, which is the house in the park. I feel so lucky living there. I think it's the most beautiful property and we've been living there for about more than four years. But my wife is a local to the Aquitmic um island. Our house are as east boundaries with the field node as Sacred Heart, where holes seventeen and eighteen are. Um, it's open field, so our yard are meeting, you know, with uh with the open field. And we see a lot of dog walkers every single day, a lot of dogs of leash as well. So I think a lot of frisbee, you know, would be a very interesting, very interesting to them. Uh, we have west boundaries with Bickelane and south boundaries with the Glen Park and the recently built uh playground. We also own the Bamboo Forest. A lot of people that walk the park, you know, definitely know us uh really well. I'm here tonight because I believe this proposal and this location puts our town, its resident and my family, which includes the four-year-old daughter and one-year-old twins at unnecessary risk, especially with the the current course design, which has a basket right in front of our yard. So obviously, we will not consider it. That it. We were private property in the park. I would like to lay a few concerns and arguments to this meeting. So this can travel over three hundred feet at high speeds. We're not forced to endure a child, a dog, or an unsuspecting walker. There are dogs and people walking the dogs every single day. We see them every single day. We have a dog ourselves. I have lots of friends that come and say hi in uh in our yard. Uh, this proposed course places vacas and fairways just yards from my private property and resident on Glen Road and Frank Coler Drive, as we just heard. Inevitably, disc will land in backyards, hit cars, and cross walking path. That means more trespassing incident, which happens quite a bit on my private property as well. More conflicts between players and residents and more opportunities for accidents. Every one of those accidents represent potential liability for the town. When a disc tracks a person, damages a vehicle or injures a pet, unlike what we've heard, again, we see dozens and dozens of people walking the path every single day. The claim doesn't stop at the player, again, often does reach municipality that build and maintains the course. So that would be Woods and Recs and the town inadvertently. A risk drives up um insurance premiums and exposes taxpayers to costs that can far outweighs any recreational benefit at the end of the day. Beyond liability, there's the impact on the park itself, foot traffic, compact souls, as we saw. I like the idea of moving the post, you know, in order to mitigate for that damage root and accelerated erosions. I love the trees that we have in the park. I own a lot of really old trees on this property. I would hate to see this really damage any of those uh old trees. So I'm not here to oppose disc golf as a sport at all. I'm here to oppose the location and the current course path. There are alternative sites up the street next to where Polo is, you know, Polo is not used uh dur- during the weekdays. It's only during the summer. There's beautiful real mixed-use facilities on uh Linden uh Lane over there. So I urge the council to reject this proposal like it stands and protect both our community and our taxpayers from liability, damage, and disruption this course will bring. Thank you.
Thank you for making the write-up and hopefully the kids are sleeping when you get back. Uh, okay, we're gonna try Mrs. Davidson real quick, then we'll come back to you. One more time. Rosemary, here we go. You you have to unmute yourself. Okay? And she's still muted on her end. Mrs. Davidson, on your lower left-hand corner of your screen is a mute button, an audio button. You gotta click on that to unmute yourself.
Mr. President, maybe somebody could pull up her letter she sent us and just read a letter.
I have a letter from her that I got.
We all got the same letter that she's concerned about the, the Glen and exit and open space. Yes.
Well, if we can't hear from her that way, maybe we could read it.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Sure. Megan Lee, 85, Massasoia Ave. Um, so I do not play disc golf. I don't like disc golf. I've tried it. I came here because some of my friends are here in support of it, but I came here from the perspective of a full-time resident, a lifelong resident, a taxpayer, someone who frequently walks at the Glen with my dog, very much enjoys the open space and the solitude that's there. Now with that said, I'm often there alone, but I do not own the Glen and I grew up here going to summer camp there, birthday parties in the pavilion, less enjoyable cross-country races there and, and really appreciate what the Glen has been. And I would say as I get older and walk there often by myself, it's not as utilized as I feel other people are saying here. So with that said, I enjoy going to Borderland Park in Massachusetts where there is a disc golf course. I'm very much am able to walk along the course vaguely and it's a nice marked path. And again, I don't like to play disc golf, so if anyone knows me, I am a woman of facts and not feelings. I wanted to do a little bit of due diligence on the benefits of the same concerns that I share with the Conservation Commission and those others of those here. Um, so foot traffic. Foot traffic at the disc golf, I think there's a lot of valid concerns there. The University of North Carolina did a study a couple of years ago where they looked at some of the premier destination disc golf courses in the country. And by destination, I mean I've had friends go do their bachelor party there, which I think actually also just says everything you need to know about disc golfers and how respectful they probably are, that they're choosing to go do their bachelor party there. Of the most premier one, which is in Raleigh, Virginia, in peak season, there's about 200 people who visit there a year. So if you think this destination course where people are going on vacation there is having 200 visitors a year over the course of a reasonable 12-hour day, groups of four, there's four to five groups of people there at any given time. I wish Mr. Dubay and Mar the best, but I don't think Portsmouth is going to get to something quite that high. So of that, I don't really have a concern. What I will say in my visits to the Glen is people off-road there right now because it's so underutilized. And so the concerns of the damage and the foot traffic there, I do feel a disc golf course there is a very aesthetic and probably not positive return for what goes on there and probably not a value-add activity for our, our police officers to be monitoring. I also think of as a partner of someone who is a local small business owner and again, a taxpayer, what the benefit could be of a disc golf course here because I know a lot of my friends leave and will go and spend the day at the brewery, go out to lunch, maybe do a little shopping. There was a, the study done by the Manhattan College plenty available that says, and because disc golf is free, right? Like there will be a consumer benefit, a consumer surplus for this, where the local businesses could achieve and fetch about $70 to $100 per day visitor in any area. That paper was done specifically around disc golfers. And then Discover Newport in 2018 did a similar study for Newport, which said that they would fetch about $192 from any day visitor. So if you look at, say you get 10 out-of-town visitors a day over the course of the year at that conservative $70 number, you're looking at a quarter million dollar benefit to the local businesses in the area. You could also charge those per donation, which it sounds like they said, again, very low number of 10 people. $5 is a pretty typical rate that people put into a donation box. That is about $18,000, which would more than sustain the cost of maintenance itself. So I would say in all, um, there's also tournaments that happen, tournaments across the country. There is the World Championship that had reported that the local businesses outside of the direct revenue that they were able to monetize brought about $3.2 million to the local town. Now, I don't think we should be hosting the World Championship and any small tournament to what Mr. Mar said, I think has some reasonable potential to bring some revenue to the town. So in all, you know, as someone who really appreciates the Glen for the open space, really enjoys my solitude, really has a love-hate relationship with tourism in the area, I would feel some sort of benefit as a resident of this town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So since we can't get Mrs. Davidson on Zoom, I will read her email that she had sent to the council. Dear council members, I am home with COVID at the age of 81, but would definitely be at the 812 meeting to oppose any plan or idea of having disc golf at Glen Park. Clearly, the people involved in the Parks and Recreation Committee have no idea what Glen Park was intended for when so many advocated for the purchase of it. Through the years, volunteers tirelessly worked to keep beautiful Serene Park, not an athletic mirage that is fast becoming. Athletic fields were to be at 70 field. It has not been easy as people with personal goals, private enterprise have invaded. Just like at one volleyball court that was approved, I attended the Parks and Rec meeting and it was recommended that other venues be explored, not Glen Park. The comments I heard were not in favor of it, but seems to be passing it on to the town council. Please preserve the park. It's not a money-making property and was never meant to be. I'll be watching as Grace Caninin and all other workers, hard workers from above. So Mrs. Davidson has been a volunteer with the Glen Park Committee for years, as long as, as Grace, who used to clean the bathrooms for years and years and years. So is there any other one else who would like to speak here locally or anybody else online? Aaron? No. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do have some questions, but I guess the biggest question I have is whether the town has vetted this whole plan. I know we can hear from, from Wendy, but Mr. Reiner, uh, is there any thoughts as far as how this fits in with the town?
Well, first I knew of it was when it appeared on the agenda, but with regard to where it fits in with the town, I think they made a very articulate case. It would be something that might be worth trying on a trial basis to see if it does meet all the parameters that they've laid out to the council. I would remind the council that in addition to the Parks and Rec Committee, we did commission a master space, a master open space facilities and recreation plan. And I think that this would tie into that, which is also co-joined with the Comprehensive Community Plan. So that you don't have to say yes or no. You can say maybe and let's see if it works.
Thank you. My, I, I would like to say that I, I am in support of bringing any kind of activity, recreational activity to Portsmouth. And for the record, I'm trying to get a couple of fields established up on the 3S property on Sandy Point Avenue, which the voters approved in 2007, and we have not been able to complete that task. So hopefully in the future, we will, we will do that somehow by hook or crook. I did attend the meeting. I've rendered my own personal opinions about a good place to put this. And at that time, I can best describe the area that I thought best would be the, what I call the amphitheater. And if you look at the, the picture here, if you want to pull that up on the screen, Mr. Lindo, it's right underneath this disc golf tablet there, description. And that is probably the least-used field that I'm aware of down in the Glen Farm. So the field below the silver plaque there, below it, and I wasn't even thinking of the field to the right, which is basically south of the parking area for the Glen Manor House, overflow parking, if you will. And I thought that would be a perfect place for it. Um, I still think it's the best place for it. I'm, I too am nervous about anything near the Glen Manor House. You know, we've already talked about that. But I think the best approach would be a trial of nine holes in that particular two parcels, if we're going to move forward with it at all. My other concerns are that I really don't think we should see advertising on the golf course. So I don't know if you've addressed that with the people that are going to sponsor. I, I don't think we should have assigned this as this whole sponsored by XYZ company, as I've seen they do by looking online over in, what's the park over in South Kingston?
Ninnegre Park.
Okay. So, um, that's one concern. The, the way that the bank, the baskets are anchored, I would prefer to see that as a standalone as you have there, perhaps with a concrete donut on the bottom. So somebody just put it on their back and walk away with it as a deterrent. But I, I don't see that we should have a stub that's protruding four inches above the ground as a potential tripping habit.
So the collar that I was speaking of is actually level with the ground and they actually make a 3D printed plug that can go in. It's what's perfectly level with the ground. So if we did have to remove these, obviously the lock and key on the bottom, it can get pulled right out and actually make a plastic little nub that fits in the hole that allows it to be flat to the ground. And I'm hearing a lot of concern about the design of the course. Now, we had to put together a design just to present. You know, that's not set in stone. I'm loving to hear all these concerns, you know, of other people, like we've been doing for the past year. It just, you know, modifying our design, you know, if, if we have areas of concern, like a gentleman's house that one of the, the basket doesn't have to go there. We just looked at the unutilized parts of the Glen and said, wow, look at this grass. It's waist-high. Nobody's walking through it. We actually saw like a little, I don't know, maybe a four or somewhere, someone was like squatting in those trees right near this gentleman's house, like a fireplace built, like a little teepee. So yeah, I can understand his concern. There's people in there that probably shouldn't be. Someone's mentioned four-wheelers or somebody off-roading there. When you bring people to a park to play disc golf, there's more foot traffic. So if some disc golfer sees some people squatting in the woods or drinking beer or doing something they're not supposed to be, they're going to say, hey, either get out of here, they're going to call the cops. So it, it helps with keeping the Glen almost safer because you have more people there. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Yep. And I appreciate the fact that you folks are flexible and that's just the direction that I'm, I'm going in. And one of the reasons I, I brought that up about a standalone was because that would be one way you'd be able to do that at Melville. You wouldn't have to dig a hole. Or Parks and Rec could say, because I, because I think if we go with this, you're going to have more people here than we're expecting. And our Parks and Rec people could say, all right, well, we want to hold the tournament at the 70 fields and it's going to bring in X amount of dollars. You have to buy a team or whatever. And you could set up a course, you know, with a standalone basket anywhere on the property. You would rent a facility for the weekend and you'd be able to do it there. You could do it at Melville. You could do it at this, this place. But I understand you're looking for something permanent, but those are just some ideas off the top of my head. The parking, I don't know. I, I foresee you, if, if you, you know, if we went with some type of nine-hole course to start with, which, which by the way, as you know, Dartmouth has a nine-hole course, Ninnegre has 18 holes. So there are different courses and you can do nine holes twice and to get you 18 holes and if that's your ultimate goal and still cover your 3.7 miles. So the other question is how many people are going to show up? The stats here from Ninnegre, just, I, I was really shocked to see in, in 2024, the monthly rounds played in the month of April was 636 rounds. 494 in May, 473 in July. This, this is a lot of foot track, traffic over there. And the reason I say we keep it away from the Glen is I, you know, I want to keep the people that are established at the Glen happy as well. I just think we're maybe biting off more than we can chew. And I think this would be a good test just to start with a nine-hole course. That's, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. I'd, I'd be interested to see if the, if each of those rounds was an individual golfer or a team of two or four. It should be an individual golfer, I would think. Just like a round of golf is an individual person round.
And, and the other thing is with those rounds, they're getting $5 per player. I mean, is this something that we want to look at as a, as income stream for the town? Because we're pulling in from our residents and we're always looking for new ways to make revenue. Is this the right way? And this is the place to do it? I'm not really sure, but I don't think we vetted all these ideas at this point.
I just wanted to add to that. Um, so Ninnegre, there's no other disc golf courses around there. None of that. It's one of the oldest disc golf courses in Rhode Island, if not the oldest. So I think it gets a lot of extra play there because people come from Connecticut to play that and there's nothing else in that area to play. So it does get more use than probably our course here would get.
Sure.
It's hard to compare those numbers is all I'm saying, you know?
I get it. But even if you saw half of those numbers, it would still be a lot of people, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, I, I thought the idea was to get more people to the Glen to utilize the space that was given to the town of Portsmouth.
Yes and no. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is, is there's some appetite to move forward, but I think we need to look at the course layout. And maybe if you could work again with Wendy and I know Ms. McDowell, Wendy, if you could come up and let her know your thoughts, because she asked for that a little while ago. And maybe work with BPW and Parks and Rec to kind of lay it out, because I also don't want to see walls falling down. We have the issues at the upper Glen at 70 of people jumping over the wall rather than walking 15 feet to go through the cut-through. And we've spent $40,000 over the past couple of years, more than that, repairing those walls. So we don't want to see that again. Wendy, would you like to give your thoughts, if you don't mind? Of potentially how you would see this going forward and how Parks and Recreation would manage it?
Yes, I do support it. I think it's a great idea. I think we could shoot for the nine holes. My thoughts are that we could run the programs and tournaments through our Civic Rec software. People sign up, you know, put a maximum amount, maybe have designated hours. I'm willing to work with it and see what happens.
Hours are easy. The park's open sunrise, sunset, so.
It is, but I, I mean, we could have designated hours for disc golf and.
Ms. McDowell?
Yeah, I just, um, so this will definitely come under Park and Rec, under your purview, right? And I know that I've met with you a couple of times and you've talked about how much you have on your plate already. So you're not concerned about adding this to your plate? Does it's no?
No. I, I think I have support from the Parks and Rec Committee. And I think with Roderick, we could really work together and make this happen. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Aaron, if you can bring up the map again real quick, please. And I know we can't see all of it, but.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Do you see any potential for this being a money-making enterprise? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of like the Beast of the East, they do a one tournament once a year or the, the soccer people come in and rent all those fields. Is that?
Not on that level. I, I.
No, I can't picture it on that level either, but.
Not on that level, but revenue, yes. Like I said, we can run it through our software, our Civic Rec and, you know, have teams sign up, have a tournament. Yeah, it can be done and, and we've come really far with what we've done.
I know you have. The field at the Audrain Museum rents for the car shows, field on the left, if you're entering the park. Is that like an $800 rental for the day?
They, um, it's eight, eight fifty.
Are you talking about the Cars and Coffee event?
Yes, Car and Coffee.
$1,000.
$1,000, okay.
They, they're paying $1,000 to be on two fields for two hours.
Sure. My, my wishful thinking is if this is as big as these sponsors have told us and the gentleman with a military background and the leagues that he's belonged to, that he could do something once a year there that would benefit the town. Because the rest of it is going to be benefiting people, citizens, anybody that wants to come in, that's going to use it for nothing essentially. So.
I would support it and I'd be there for whatever is needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to hang on, Wendy. Mary's got one more question.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Gleason said, so is it, is it your understanding that if people play, they register through the Civic Rec? They, so if I wanted to go.
If, if a large group was going to play, yeah. If, if a group said, hey, we want to have a small outing.
Anybody could go, the group of four, and they don't have to go through Civic Rec, right?
Right. Just like if you're going to the playground at Turnpike or if you're going to basketball courts or you're going to football courts at the high school. Obviously, there's times at the high school you can't go. Schools are in session or whatever, but yes, you're open to anybody. Schools are in session or whatever, but um, yes, you'll be open to anybody unless specifically rented out for a tournament.
Okay.
We could set up leagues and tournaments in in the system, absolutely.
Aaron, because that picture's small, I'm gonna challenge you real quick to bring up Google Maps. To show the whole property, if you don't mind. Any other counselors have any questions coming?
I just have a question as far as the insurance as one of the um
It's just like any other park. If 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 somebody goes to the Turnpike Playground, falls and breaks an arm, chances are they're gonna sue the town because we have deep pockets.
Same thing with tournaments.
Same, tournaments have their own specific insurance. So when uh Beast of the East comes, they have their own insurance. So if somebody were to come and say, hey, I want to have a birthday party at the four parts playground. They should, if they're gonna rent it out, they would have to provide insurance as well. But if Susie Homemaker goes where there are two kids and he falls and break, one of them falls and breaks their arm. Unfortunately, with the deep pockets. Thank you, Aaron. That was very quick. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mr.
No, I just want to make sure that any agreements we make at all, I'll run through our solicitors to make sure that the town is protected as always possible.
It's gonna be a town entity, so I don't know what kind of agreement it would be, but. So eighteen holes and or nine holes. So my thought process was starting hole one up over by the tennis courts and coming down that tree line there. And as Mr. Gleason mentioned, there might be some more space uh in the amphitheater part where the old sheep shed used to be. Yep. Yeah, well, sort of, and that that the squatters rights, yeah. Yeah. And then instead of going into that Sacred Heart area, maybe coming back with seventeen and eighteen, coming back where fourteen, uh, sixteen, fifteen and sixteen, I'm doing myself that map and trying to relate into that map, but um.
So that area behind the soccer field is also highly underutilized and also a huge slope that could be mapped, they can maximize more with.
Right. So um, I would like to see the folks who are wanting this to potentially come back with a new plan, work with DPW, Parks and Recreation, and then come back to us maybe the first meeting in September. That give you enough time? That sound good?
You're talking about the above the amphitheater field of one of the arrows right now, those three fields there?
That field there, uh, where they already, that field had holes fifteen and sixteen going out and seventeen and eighteen were going around the corner of Frank Cuello and Glen.
Right.
So that would keep us away from.
All the other functions essentially.
And also the roads theoretically, even though I am a golfer and I do have a nasty slice on occasion and could put it all the way out across Frank Cuello if, you know. It happens.
So is that, so that'll take care of the one, two, three, seventeen and eighteen?
Correct. Right, they would do, well, it would be labeling the holes differently now.
Okay.
So.
Is it possible to get what Mr. Gleason, when they come back to get, you know, the eighteen and a nine? Or just to get the options?
Sure.
If it's.
I, well, I would recommend it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I I would like to see that too, if possible, the two options. And also, um, if they're coming back to a September meeting, I would love it if you could organize for any council member that wants to walk that course that um you're going to set up the the nine and the eighteen prior to the meeting, that would be very helpful for me.
Even potentially borrow some cones and put them out and say hole one, hole two.
Right.
That kind of a thing. Not digging in the ground and putting those up. Because I'm assuming you don't have eighteen of those at this point in time. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Wendy. They have cones. They don't have the discs. DPW has got plenty of cones.
Okay.
David, one more time. Do I say say my address?
Yeah.
Perfect. So can I ask then, um, oh, can you put that map back up? Sorry, I have it on my phone, but I just want to see it. Just because we, this version of this map was probably the sixth iteration that we've discussed. So can I ask where that square is? That is the volleyball court.
Correct.
Would any of you have objections starting to the left of the volleyball court?
West of the volleyball, yeah, absolutely. That's what I'm thinking.
Key one. So and then above that field is the parking lot.
Correct.
Is there any objections of putting a disc, a a a P, a tin, tin, a pin and a T somewhere along, not along the road, but somewhere in that parking lot, maybe along the where the uh left side hedges are toward the top, saying like hole one, coming from the street down. You're throwing from the street down, so you're not throwing from the street. I only say that because their first version that they had had a pin there along the volleyball and then basically where the picnic area in quotation, all the way down, straight down. It started there and I believe if we didn't initially, or they didn't initially have anything near the Glen, but that was an opposition uh that layout for a few people that walked their horses in that area. So we, they, I keep saying we because we've been involved in this forever. Dan and Rodrick were very accommodating to that one particular person's comments about that area of the park. So that's the reason why it changed. So I'm just asking you guys, so when we all get back together, what are your ideal locations that would say yes?
Well, it just, anything.
Away from the street, away from the Glen Manor.
Roads and away from the manor house.
So the other one in the Sacred Heart Field, that gentleman, and I totally under
See the soccer field and the softball field.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna put one through the softball field. We got that. The gentleman that came in that had the house, the private house in the Sacred Heart, I understand what he's saying. Uh, I will just say that I walked this course with Dan and Rodrick um before. And I don't know if you guys changed it, but initially going to the bush next to where it says Sacred Heart, there was uh, that would be a pin there, which would no way hit their house because you'd have to go through trees.
Way this map shows, it's actually up towards.
So, yeah, so when we walked the course, we were saying near the house wouldn't be a pin. It would be the T box throwing towards the right.
Okay, but that's not the way the map.
I know, I know. So I'm just, that's why I was like, did you guys change that? Because I I, when we walked the course, we were talking about starting at that house and throwing that way. That's why. So if that was a change, would there be any objections to that?
Well, the only issue you have there is you have to have a hole to get you to that tee.
You do, so.
Being going along Frank Cuello with seventeen.
It would be, so as I was saying, I I don't remember if this changed a little bit, but the pin on this map would be to the right, but it could also be to the left, flip flop it. And then you walk up behind those trees and then throw that way.
Would that have to walk down there?
Okay, no, that's that's fine.
And the walls, are there cut throughs or are we taking down?
There is, through those trees, there is a path to walk from the bottom below your cursor up to towards the house. There is a path to walk through those trees and that's where the squatters were. So.
Oh, that's
No, that's not private property. Oh, yeah, that's where we thought it was. It looked like it looked like a squatter's butt. So that was just, that was the thing where I thought maybe with a a change of where you're throwing the pin that could help. So that's all.
It just, you you've heard the concerns.
Yeah, no, no.
Roger, you've heard the concerns.
Yes.
If if we could just redesign it and bring it back to first meeting in September, if that gives you enough time. If you don't need, if you can't do it, second meeting in September, it's up to you. I mean, we're not talking about radical changes. We're just talking about location changes to make everybody happy.
Yeah, cool. I just want
And if we can get a nine and an eighteen.
Last time, I I'm sorry, guys. But um, so what I'm getting, it's it's not that we don't want a disc golf course there. We just, we want a little redesign. That's why we proposed this. This is a no way final. You know, um, I think what we're looking for is the okay to, hey, look, you know, we want this. We need to, you know, go over the design with Parks and Rec, but we'd like to get the approval to know like, all right, we want it there. You guys can start building that way. We could start the nonprofit, start funding. So when we're ready, say next month with this plan, okay, hey, you know, this is the new course design. Everybody's happy with it. It's a go. You know, I I looked up, not to add, you know, I looked up injuries to disc golf just because, you know, I saw some concern with um, you know, injuries in in the town being, you know, responsible for this. So uh, the most common injuries with disc golf are sprains, strains and tendonitis. So reading through this, it's actually more dangerous to be playing on that playground or to be playing volleyball than it is to be playing disc golf there.
I I I think the main concern about a couple of those holes is not somebody being hurt playing the game, playing disc golf. It's more of the disc going out into Frank Cuello or onto Glen Road and somebody having to swerve to miss it and hit a tree or a wall. Uh, in in Mr. um Hennings case, it's that one location of the eighteenth hole of the disc accidentally going over the wall and potentially hitting him, his kids, the dog.
Yeah, no, I understand the concern. That's I say, it it just sounds like we just need a little bit of redesign. And this pamphlet, like the Disc Golfers Code, you know, play smart, respect the the course, represent the sport. It's just like golf. You said you're a golfer. If you're standing up at the first tee and, you know, you got a guy looking for his ball over in your fairway because he sliced it over into the fairway, you're not gonna hit your ball. You know, and and I gotta just reiterate, it it's not ball golf. You know, uh, these discs do not try, like, I I used to be able to hit the ball almost three hundred yards, trust me, but I can't throw a disc more than two hundred and fifty feet. You know, so.
And it's just. I'm not gonna speak for the council, but yes, I'm in favor of doing something. But we need to find a, see a final plan that we can all agree to, that the residents, the neighbors can agree to as well. I don't think it's gonna interfere in folks hiking or walking their dogs.
Agreed.
I I mean, if if you're gonna throw the the widest of, I don't know how the arc is on a, on a, on a disc.
Similar to a regular frisbee.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a whole lot of arc.
Thirty feet out to the left and
Yeah, exactly, thirty, thirty, forty feet at the most, yep.
Yeah. So if I'm walking my dog and I have to go fifty feet away from the disc golf place, I don't think that's a, or or walking my horse, I don't think it's a huge ask.
No, I think you
To share the property.
I think you could walk right through the middle of the course and it wouldn't affect anything. And and it's not like we have people there all the time. So during the the middle of the week, during the day, there's gonna be nobody there. People come after work. That's, you know, that's the time people are there and it's, you know, it, people aren't going to be flocking to this. You know, there's nine other courses in Rhode Island. There's there's places to play, but just not around here. So unfortunately for this island, there's, we have to travel over forty five minutes in any direction to go play. Thank you.
Understood.
We do need a motion to table and until Septe- the September ninth?
September ninth, some old.
That is that good enough time to go through, walk, that gives enough time for you to redesign it and the council to go look at it, if that works for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
So that they can, you know, we can maybe have a time, like, all right, today's the day. We all want to go through the disc golf and do the walkthrough, maybe arrange that through Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Just if we can get a nine and an eighteen hole map.
And and probably include the Conservation Commission as well.
Yeah.
So they can lay their concerns.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So a a motion to table till September ninth is made by
Mr. Payara.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? I oppose, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, folks, all for coming out tonight and hopefully we'll have an answer in September. Appreciate it. They're they're a lot heavier on the outside. So I I can see why that's your favorite disc. I guess, appreciate it. Yeah, it's got the jets, but it's got his kids on it. Probably a Mets fan too. It's normally Mets and Jets and Giants and Yankees, right? Alrighty, we're gonna move on to new business number two with a discussion of potential amendment to the existing town ordinance related to alcoholic beverages specifically include language addressing cannabis infused beverages, otherwise known as THC beverages. Thank you for sitting through. I, do you play disc golf?
I don't, but I don't think I want to. I'd be good if I didn't hear about it ever again, but
Thank you.
Good evening, honey.
See you on the ninth then.
No, no, you'll see me walking my dog. All right, good evening. My name is Georgie Cranston. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition. I serve as the coordinator and I stepped into this position in October of twenty twenty four. So I am here because we are requesting that the current ordinance prohibiting public consumption of alcoholic beverages, chapter eighty nine, be updated to also include THC infused beverages, cannabinoid containing. So why? Um, I'm not gonna give you the whole um science background right now, but what I will say is that these beverages are becoming more widely available in Rhode Island. Um, and without clear language in our ordinance, the enforcement becomes inconsistent and creates a loophole. So with that, youth perception of harm um can be lowered when these products are consumed openly in public spaces. Environmental scans of the liquor stores in Portsmouth showed that three out of four of the liquor stores do sell these THC drinks. And the IDing processes at these liquor stores is not as concrete as they are at the dispensaries where there are multiple checkpoints where your ID has to be scanned. So this is a concern for making youth access to these beverages easier. So from a public safety and prevention standpoint, um, we would like to change the language in this ordinance to align it with current trends that will help maintain a family friendly um community, public areas, um, and is consistent with our prevention messaging. And we respectfully ask the council to consider this update to ensure our local policy keeps pace with evolving products and continues to protect the health and well being of the Portsmouth community.
Thank you. Is this something we're gonna have to have a public hearing for or can we just make the adjustment? No, we have to have a public hearing, okay.
Before we make a motion, and I'll be glad to make the motion, I appreciate you bringing this forward and I think you'll have our support here. So the motion would be to have a public hearing to modify the existing ordinance. Excuse me, to add the cannabis infused beverages.
You need three weeks or can we do it in the next meeting?
We can do it in the next meeting.
On this mic up.
A second discussion.
Mr. President, uh, just so that this council knows, uh, this would, uh, actually, and I I appreciate the support that we've already espoused. This would align our tobacco policy that we currently have in public space to align with our alcohol policy to include cannabis, so.
Georgie, thank you for bringing this to my attention.
Thank you.
I I have a question. Is it the both alcoholic cannabinoid containing beverages and non alcoholic?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, are you asking if?
They're not gonna find that the non alcoholic ones, or are you in the liquor stores?
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Yes.
But the liquor stores, I would think they have to be able to do that at a dispensary because otherwise liquor store is licensed for alcohol, not.
There's actually a a separate license, I believe, I believe, I haven't researched this, but a liquor store can get a license to to sell THC infused beverages. And without even having to get a license, they can sell.
So there's more places to get THC than I ever knew. Okay.
It's the beverage form.
Not that I, but that's what I ever knew.
BBD is a different story than THC because it's not a
Correct.
hallucinogenic.
Yeah, it it's, we put the and in the, and then we kind of expanded it to cannabinoid to align with the state law.
And Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President, can I also ask, do you know if there's um a model for this language using any other cities or towns in Rhode Island at this point?
Not really.
I'm gonna get it because it's so new.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just good to see whatever everyone else is doing.
I mean, the THC beverages, I think I started seeing six to eight months ago. It's not, it's not been a long time.
We were ahead of the curve as a town when it came to adding cannabis to our tobacco policy. And so what we did was just add cannabis to that when we did that. This is when I was on the school committee who worked on that. And so this was just kind of on the same type of uh mindset on on that.
Blaze the trail, as it were.
Are you with advertising once? Or would you rather have it on the ninth?
I I I think you have to treat this like any other, this is a, this is an ordinance change, correct? Right? I think you have to treat it like any other ordinance change.
So we should do it on the ninth? Advertise twice?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Gleason, you should amend your motion to have it on the ninth instead of twenty-fifth. Yeah, just amend the motion.
And and I had not mentioned a date.
Yeah.
In my motion, but the motion would be to have the hearing uh on the night.
Okay.
Of September.
Perfect. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Don't go too far.
Thank you.
New business number three, too. Alright.
I'm Kathleen Brigelli. Um, I am the director of No Wrong Door and we are asking to uh place a banner. And three hundred and twenty-nine individual purple flags. Um, over in the triangle. We've done it every year for five years, I think. Um, and we would love for the support with this.
Did we put the banner on by the sign and then the flags out front?
We put the banner kind of behind the little flags because they're they're small.
Yeah, I know the I know the flags are small. I just couldn't remember where the banner was placed, as long as we obviously place it where it's not gonna impede.
Yeah.
Vision for traffic and all that good stuff. We have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for your support and I I'm only saddened that we have so many flags.
Yeah, me too. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sitting through the previous presentation as well.
New business number four, request approval for a resolution in support of increasing funding to Rhode Island Public Transit Authority. Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is solely a resolution that myself and a couple other colleagues of mine. Uh, throughout the state are presenting and at our municipalities in order to support. And a full funding and for Ripta. And it's been forced by a ten million dollar budget deficit. Uh, which will eliminate fifty-eight of sixty-three bus routes, including our town's parking ride. Um, this would be catastrophic for tens of thousands of Rhode Islanders throughout the state that rely on Ripta day in and day out, and more especially those of us. Uh, those that do use um public transportation in order to get to school and work. Uh, a reliable transportation system is fundamental to any modern society, for especially for those that can't afford a car. Um, and it would contribute, uh, additional cars would contribute to chronic traffic, which we already experienced on this island every morning. Parking issues and pollution issues. And the study that just came out. Said that Rhode Island does have a comprehensive system that is just suffering from disinvestment. And neglect from state government year after year. And so I hope. Um, that I can count on your support to just send this uh resolution to all the other municipalities for their support and urging the governor. Uh, to fully fund Ripta.
Like. Yeah, no, I just, um, does this still apply? Because I understood that the reduction in funding was canceled.
No.
No.
The reduction in routes were canceled, but they're still ten million dollars short.
They're still ten million dollars shorts and the only thing that they ended up doing was uh tabling. Any, they punted the entire item.
I I I think the biggest thing that, I mean, for me, you know, just looking at Route sixty.
No, I agree, no, but I just, it was just a wording.
We take maybe a half a route out, around a steak, take a couple, not taking a route out, but taking a time out. Reduce the number.
I wanted to make sure you were asking for the right thing because it says enhanced investment with the versus level funding. So we wanna go to level funding and beyond.
So advanced enhanced investment is because Ripta currently does not receive a line item in the in the state budget.
Oh.
Uh, they solely rely on either federal grants, the um revenue that they make from fares itself. Which the study, the efficiency study said that that's not the backbone of any type of municipal or statewide transportation system. And so just creek, uh, forcing the governor or asking the governor to come up with new and innovative ways in order to be able to.
Right, that needs dedicated funding.
That dedicated would be.
Dedicated funding is what I was.
I would not disagree with you with the words dedicated funding whatsoever, uh, but I was trying to just be as creative and open as possible when drafting.
So that's a motion to.
A motion to to pass the resolution.
Sir, a second.
Second.
I just have one question. So your methodologies still. Uh, you're still in favor of this resolution, even though you're have come, you've come up with a solution on your own to just change.
I have, but I don't think Ripta will listen to me. I mean, but if you took out. The bus leaves from Newport at five fifty-nine and six twenty-five and six fifty-five. I mean, we we've all have to make sacrifices in our lives. If if we just took one or two of those out. And somebody had to go to work a little early. We might be able to close that budget gap. That's all.
I I only asked the question because I I agree that it's this sensible solution here to some degree. And just throwing more money at it, it's just the Rhode Island way of, you know, I I get it, you know, there's not enough there, it needs, we need to steal from another pile of money somewhere, you know?
I I I would, I would agree with that assertion, except for the fact that it's not like DHS that has a line item in the budget. And we're not stealing from Peter to pay Paul.
Sure.
So the I'm just, the resolution really focuses on trying to. Encourage the governor in order to be able to come up with the funding that is needed in order to keep. Yes, ideally, the routes that are in play. Without getting into the minutia of routes and everything that is still up to Ripta to do. Um, but currently being able to come up with the funding mechanism in order to keep the services that it has. To avoid the catastrophic cuts that are currently on the table, giving the financial situation that they're in.
No, to to, my point is that I don't think Ripta is, they're going in with a chainsaw rather than a scalpel. And they're just saying, we're gonna cut this route. So nobody from Burlville is gonna be able to take a bus to Providence. Rather than saying, you can get a bus from Burlville to Providence eight times a day instead of the twelve that currently exist. That's that's all I'm saying, that I'm creating a fat, that's all.
Can't argue with you there. Um, just, uh, it's another state agency that may or may not be run properly. And, you know, um, for the betterment, I I will support this, you know, and hope for the best.
We do have a lot of citizens that take the bus to Providence every day.
Yes, I agree.
So, or into Newport, either way. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have new business number five, discussion and possible action on the construction maintenance agreement sent by Rydot, Ms. McDowell.
I put this on for a couple reasons, but one primarily was just to um find out what the journey. Of this agreement has been. I mean, how it started, where it's been. Um, and this is, you know, it was referred to at the last meeting, kind of. In disguise or something, and I did some research and realized that this this sort of thing started back, it seems, in May. With Chief Ford and then um got ramped up in July, in July. But we hadn't seen anything like that. And then um it appears that some. Anyways, I wanna know about the journey first.
But it's, it's not really a journey.
Okay.
It's in, it's DOT trying to subvert their responsibilities of taking care of state roads. And anytime they do a project in any city or town, they're asking the towns to take over the maintenance of sidewalks. That's it. This started back when we just started discussions, Sprague Street, five, six, seven years ago. And they just wanted to see if we would take over the, in fact, they started with, hey, we'll do it sooner if you guys will pay for the sidewalks to start out with. Which would then mean we own them. So it, that's it. It's it's, right now, it's a dead issue. The ball's in their court.
But when this maintenance agreement came to the town, do we get to discuss this?
Yes, if it, if there's a full on maintenance agreement to come forward, yes, it is part of the responsibility of the town to discuss it on a council.
Okay, so who makes the decision whether or not, I mean, the.
The council would make the decision whether or not we were gonna go into a maintenance of of agreement.
But it's been presented to us. It has not.
It has not. It's been administratively presented.
It it's.
And administratively denied.
Okay, so the construction maintenance agreement was discussed back in twenty twenty-three, right? We pushed back and we received correspondence from DOT in October of twenty twenty-three stating that. Uh, on August fourth, twenty twenty-three, Rydot sent Portsmouth a C and M agreement related to sidewalks on this project. It has been determined that the project can move forward without this agreement. So that we, it was a dead issue. There is, in conjunction with the project, uh, Sprague Street in West Main. Uh, VHB has been talking to DOT about the installation of upgraded opticon systems. These are the systems that are on a stoplight. So emergency vehicles can transit and be able to change the stoplights on demand. At the staff level, uh, we, you know, Chief Ford said, yeah, if you're, if we're gonna do the construction, let's upgrade these systems. As a surprise to us, we received uh the construction maintenance agreement that, uh, while it included. Uh, a C and M agreement for the opticon system, it put back in. Uh, the requirement that the town would take ownership and maintenance responsibility of state-owned sidewalks. All I did was refer them back to the correspondence I received two years ago. Uh, and their response has been, uh, essentially, uh, okay. Uh, thanks for raising your concerns. I completely understand Portsmouth's position. Immediately forward your request to Rydot legal for review. So that's where we're at. Where the ball's in their court, we're waiting to see what they say. So there's nothing really to bring to the council. Uh, until they've made a determination how far, how hard they wanna push this. And once we get something to present to the council, we will. So this is not something that. Uh, you know, has been kept from the council. We didn't get this letter until July twenty-four.
And the opticon system is a system utilized by all first responders, including state police, Bristol, if they came through that light. So there's really, it should be a state-funded.
Right, and that, we would use the same argument as it sidewalks, e- even though communities have agreed to these C and M agreements. Uh, historically Portsmouth has been fundamentally opposed to this. This is an unfunded mandate. These are state properties that they're asking towns to and municipalities to take ownership of. We're not staff for it and we're not equipped to do it. And plus, there's legal liabilities associated with this. Add to that, the opticon systems and to the uh, the president's point. Uh, it's not just Portsmouth emergency vehicles that are transiting Portsmouth road, state roads. I mean, let's talk about it. These these, these lights are on state roads. Why would we take ownership of an opticon system that is being used by all surrounding emergency services, including the US Navy? Uh, so this is something that, uh, they're gonna have to discuss with their legal team and then at the appropriate time, we'll bring it back to the council.
Rydot is just trying to push down more responsibilities on the cities and towns and and abdicating their responsibilities, that's all. And they've been doing it for years, or trying to do it for years. We've said no every time.
Do we presently um have to take care of any sidewalks um in the state road? With these, because we do have some installed already, correct?
All of all of East Main Road.
There'll be on Sprague. There's Park Avenue. Uh, we don't own any of those sidewalks.
Technically, by state law, the property owner abutting it is supposed to clean that sidewalk.
Right.
It is no.
So if and when this comes back, it'll come back to the council, correct?
Correct. It's it's even, I think in the letter, it even states uh that it should go before the council and. Uh, in the signature blocks is the president of the council, so this would have to come back to you for your your approval.
If if you wanted to go forward of taking over the sidewalks.
If we wanted to go forward with the. With the agreement that in order for these to be installed, you have to take care of the sidewalks, but there's some negotiation, it seems like, that's going on, correct, or?
No negotiation. We were very clear. You sent us uh correspondence in October of twenty twenty-three that said, no. C and M agreement was necessary to to move forward with the project. Uh, that's the last official correspondence we have until we received this letter on July twenty-fourth. Asking us to sign it again. And. The correspondence has said, you know, es- essentially, uh, what do you mean? You've already said this isn't necessary, to which their response is. Uh, wait. So that's what we're doing.
I just wanna ask a question. Um, as Mary has said, this kind of came up. You know, unexpectedly. Um, it was mentioned briefly at one of our other uh meetings, but. When you say bring it back to the council, are you saying bring it back to the council as far as all seven of us or just the president as it's been in the past?
If if there was a decision to be made, it would come back to the entire council for approval. But there's no decision to be made because they've already told us that we don't need to.
And.
And they tried to loop in our legal department to say, hey, you know, just keep this in in mind. That there's an agreement. So it would come back to the council, yes.
I'm just.
There's, there's, there's nothing nefarious going on here. It's just.
You know, a lot of back and forth and ever, you know, never spoken about before, so I was just curious.
It's.
But this disagreement would would be a far-reaching thing if they ever got this past us. Because it mean, would mean we have to be taking over the um liability of all the East Main Road sidewalks.
Well, they could if they wanted to, but specifically this agreement is Sprague Street, period.
But we'll get a second bite at the apple on that. The other one I really had an interest in was the opticon system, which is a very good idea. And uh.
Except that they want us to maintain it.
Well, no, the whole thing. Now, I've I've got, I was, tried to call Chief Ford today, but he took the day off, so. Because I wanna find out who pays for the present system maintenance. What is present extent of the system? Is this maintenance in the fire department budget or is it being done by the state?
It's all being done by the state now.
Now, the other thing I'm wondering, they want us to pay, they want us to pay for that.
Correct.
But is that required by the emergency management FEMA or other federal agency? See, it's a, that would be an emergency management thing. You know, we're trying to get a rescue vehicle down to someplace quickly, you wanna open the path.
Currently, we do not pay for any opticon systems or previous lives of opticon.
No, I read this in detail and it says, now, my question was the state install new and upgraded opticon systems at no cost to the town. Because if you read it, I just wanna make sure, because they said they'd include it, or do they include it in the contract and we pay for it? I wanna make sure that they're not just gonna put it in and send us a bill.
It doesn't work that way.
Alright, okay, that you never, I mean, the water department finding out things, right, Dave? Or is that's.
They 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 will do the same thing to you and try and put, at the water department, try and put things in specifically to make you do things. And hope you don't catch it.
Right, because if if that is required and somehow we had to pay for the opticon system. And I looked up, there's maintenance companies that do this. We'd have to know the cost of the maintenance for the final installed system. So we'd have to obtain bids from three qualified maintenance companies. And then we'd also have to pay for the cost of the required state onsite inspector that they make, yeah, you know, get. That'll be a new town budget line item cost for the fire department.
No, it won't. We're not taking on the responsibility.
No, but if they ever.
We're, okay, let's try it again. We are not taking on the responsibility, period. That's it. I don't care who's sitting up here in the next two years. We ain't taking on a responsibility of state's job.
The council decision, we're not gonna do it. But, and the other thing was, there is this, from what I, I did a lot of research on this and it said, there is assistance to get help. Paying for this system and it comes from like uh Safe Streets for All and stuff like that.
The installation of the system would be paid for underneath.
Okay.
The upgrades of Sprague Street sidewalks and everything, that would be included in the.
I think they should get the whole bag of worms.
The Sprague Street, West Main Road and the.
Liability.
It's interesting that they didn't mention the opticon system that would be going at middle, that quarry on those two lights and such intersection upgrade.
It it is. The only one they're not gonna do is Oakland Farm. That's the only one that I, that wasn't in there.
Well, we're not paying for any of them, so. Mr. Gleason.
If, Mr. Rainey, would you like to finish your comment? And I'll, and I'll add mine.
It doesn't work the way you implied. DOT installs, pays for the installation, pays for the equipment, same thing as the sidewalks. If they were putting a sidewalk. They, their subcontractors will build the sidewalks, lay the concrete, put the sidewalks in. We would be responsible for the maintenance of those in perpetuity afterwards, so. Uh, that's how it would work. So we would not get a bill for new opti- that's how it would work. So we would not get a bill for new Opticon systems or new sidewalks. That's in the contract that DOT signs with their, their contractors and their subcontractors. What we have in the past done is we've said, we've pushed back and said, we, please explain to us why this, what is the legal requirement for us to take over these responsibilities for state property? And up until now, it, the answer has always come back eventually that, to paraphrase, never mind, it's not necessary. They've done it again in twenty twenty-three with this project, West Main and Sprague Street. They said, never mind, it's not necessary. And then a month ago.
Yeah.
We, less than a month ago, we, we got a letter putting it back in again. So it'll go back to the league department, and their last words were to us. They want to fully explore all options before making a final determination. I don't even know what that means. They're waiting further additional guidance from their legal team regarding whether this paragraph represents standard language typically required in C and M agreements of this nature. Yeah, we've been down this road a hundred times, exaggerate, but multiple times with DOT. Ultimately, it will come. If we ever take on budgetary responsibility, that of, of course, something that would have to be approved by the entire council. The reason one counselor was aware of this is because the correspondence, the emails were addressed to that counselor. That's all. And then we brought it to your town.
And DOT, yeah, not DOT. In the last legislative session, the Senate passed a bill stripping this constructive maintenance agreements away from DOT and stopping them from doing it. The House didn't take it up. So contact your state representatives and tell them to get the damn bill through again.
Sure. Because we don't, we don't want to pay for the maintenance of the Opticon system.
We don't want to pay for the maintenance of anything that's on the United States. Well, not only that, but you, you, okay, you have to maintain it, but when you do, you have to call us to get our guys to come watch you maintain it.
Exactly.
So if you're going to call your guys, have them maintain it.
We probably got to buy his coffee.
We reached out to the, the league as exactly as was described. We got wrapped up in the budget and then the summer break. We thought this had passed, but obviously it didn't. It got stalled in the House. This is going to be one of the top priorities of the Rhode Island League legislative agenda for the next legislative session. So we'll see where it goes. But I think it would be premature to even consider signing anything like this right now.
So just, is the fear of saying no going to affect the job? Is this job supposed to start this fall? That, your guess is as good as mine, right? But is it supposed to start this fall, isn't it?
Always a danger with DOT, yes.
I changed my mind.
It, it's tied into the project on West Main Road and also McCory.
Yeah.
So if they are true to form, it's too far down the road to make any changes. Like, hey, we can't pull out East Main Road from Henley Street down the Portsmouth line because it's tied into the roundabout project. So if Mr. Alvedi and DOT wants to, and they're probably listening now, want to, you know.
They know where you live.
That's okay. If, if they want to continue to talk out of both sides of the mouth, then, okay. Hopefully, they don't do that and pull it out from underneath us.
Time will tell.
All right. Don't need to do anything. We have correspondence. Thank you for visiting nurses and all kinds of other fun stuff. Okay.
Is your microphone on?
Prudence Island Water, just holding ground breaks.
That's something that, that we do separately? Is that, I'm just wondering if.
If you want to go over there on August twenty-third and watch them, they put a shovel in the ground. We, we worked with them and provided some ARPA money, and they got a grant from Jack Reed's office for white, nine hundred, one point two million or one point eight million dollars. To help clean up their water because they'd have a boil water advisory.
That grant and the ARPA money that, that, and any money that they were able to raise, they were able to come up with the, the amount of money needed to upgrade their water treatment facility systems so that they can get out from underneath this boil water advisory, which they've been suffering through for a number of years.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I, this is unusual, but I'm going to ask that we carry over number five, which is the Ryrec Report. Excuse me, to the next meeting, and it would, I would write the agenda item where we'd have a general discussion of how this is affecting our recycling rate and other issues that may or may not, we may or may not be having with herb site and the transfer station. Just a general update as well. I only say that because we've, we've tripled the amount of trash by combining the programs, and I don't know that we can do this separately. We can have that conversation then. And we've dropped below our, we're at the lowest recycling now. So that's my biggest concern. So that being said, I would propose that we receive all correspondence placed on file except for five, which I would carry over to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Yes.
Mr. President, on number three there, there's going to be a public hearing. Is there any benefit of us taking that out and having a discussion as a council via two?
You can, if you want.
I just, you know, as a new council member, I think it would be very helpful for me to discuss as a council that particular item prior to the, the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Our next meeting is on eight twenty-five. It may not take long, but it would be helpful to me.
Mr. Gleason, would you like to amend your motion to pull three and five? That's all. Microphone.
You need the microphone.
Let's do that again. Okay. So we'll receive all correspondence and place on file with the exception of three and five.
And we'll put them on for all business for our next meeting.
And Ms. West, if you could just note that as a motion to reconsider the motion, buy the movement. Just to keep the Roberts rules.
Thank you.
Second.
Yep, she already said it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. So we have our meeting on August twenty-fifth, September eighth, eighth or ninth? You kept saying the ninth earlier. Eighth is the Monday.
Labor Day is the first.
It's the.
Okay, it was the. All right.
I had appropriate this morning, too.
Yes. Okay.
What should I turn?
Second.